Councilmember Anderson, seconds. We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Business item 2B, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution Number 206, adopting the tentative budget for the City of West Jordan Redevelopment Agency for fiscal year 2018-2019, and set June 13, 2018, as the budget public hearing. David Bricky.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. At this point, if there's any questions, I know we're running about three minutes late, so I'll just ask if the council has no questions, I'd ask for you to approve the budget that's been presented.
I think we're just setting the date for the public hearings, all we're doing at this point.
And adopting the tentative budget, yes.
That's right.
Do you have a motion? Councilmember Anderson.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 206, adopting the tentative budget for the City of West Jordan Redevelopment Agency for fiscal year 1819, and set June 13, 2018, as the public budget hearing.
Second. Councilmember McConaughey, second.
Perhaps if I could just interrupt, sorry, do you want to set a specific time? 5:30, 5:45? Do you want to start right at 6?
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second? Is there a discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Jacob?
Yes.
Chair Writing?
Yes.
Board member Lamb?
Yes.
Board member Burton?
Yes.
Board member Whitlock?
Yes.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes seven in favor.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency and convene the municipal building authority meeting. So moved. Councilmember Jacob? Excuse me, board member Jacob?
Second.
And a second by board member Burton. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I call this meeting to order of the Municipal Building Authority for the City of West Jordan. All board members are present. Business item 2A, approve the minutes of December 20, 2017, as presented. Councilmember Anderson?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. Burton, excuse me, board member Burton, seconded. We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion.
I would just like to abstain, I didn't know we were doing roll call votes on minutes, so I want to abstain from all three minutes, because I have not read them, I did not participate, so I don't really want to vote on any of the minutes. Thank you.
On the minutes, it's an aye or nay vote, so you're going to abstain?
I'm abstaining.
Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Business item 2B, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 206, adopting the tentative budget for the City of West Jordan Municipal Building Authority for fiscal year 2018-2019, and set June 13, 2018, as the budget public hearing. David Bricky.
Thank you. This is the 1.7 million debt service on the new Public Works building, and if you have any questions, Eric Oakland is present to address those.
Seeing none, we have a motion. Councilmember Lamb, excuse me, board member Lamb?
I move to approve Resolution 96, adopting the tentative budget for the City of West Jordan Municipal Building Authority for fiscal year 2018-2019, and set June 13, 2018, for the public hearing.
Board member Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote.
Board member Whitlock?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board member Jacob?
Yes.
Board member Lamb?
Yes.
Chair Writing?
Yes.
Board member Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn the municipal building authority and convene the Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District meeting. So moved. Councilmember Jacob?
Second.
Moved, and a second by councilmember Anderson. Is there a discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I call this meeting to order of the Fairway Estates Special Services Recreation District for the City of West Jordan. All board members are present. Business item 2A, approve the minutes of December 20, 2017, as presented. We have a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes of December 20, 2017.
Board member Anderson made the motion?
Second.
And board member Jacob, seconds. We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Business item 2B, approve Resolution Number 18-91, adopting the tentative budget for the City of West Jordan, Fairway Estates, Special Service Recreation District for the fiscal year 2018-2019, and set June 13, 2018, as the budget public hearing. David Bricky.
Thank you. The $17,000 involved in this matter is to help pay for maintenance, water fees, costs associated with the area very near the golf course that was created as a special service district to assist in the golf course's maintenance. If you have any questions, Dave Naylor's here for that question, those questions.
Seeing none, we have a motion. Board member Burton?
I move to approve Resolution 18-91.
We have a second.
Second.
Board member Anderson is the second. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board member Burton?
Yes.
Board member Whitlock?
Yes.
Chair Writing?
Yes.
Board member Jacob?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Lamb?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District and reconvene the city council meeting.
So moved.
Board member Lamb, moved, and board member Jacob?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Okay, I call the city council meeting back to order. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Cooper Savage, Troop 1901. Cooper, come up.
Hey, the audience, please rise. Please salute the flag in proper manner. Please repeat the pledge after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Audience may be seated.
Thank you, Cooper. We'll now move to our communications, and we begin with the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Today, or excuse me, this Monday, this past Monday, our new HR director started. Ms. Murray and I sat down, and we will be posting very soon the position for an opening of the Chief of Police. That was something of a priority that we've been working on since her arrival, as well as rewriting and drafting and updating the employee handbook. That may be the two biggest matters of which I want to share, nothing beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you. You look a little lonely over there, by yourself.
The city attorneys are all at the Utah Municipal Attorneys Association, and as I understand it, they may be watching us as we are attempting to verify our streaming procedures are working properly. If they are, maybe they'll send me a confirming text right now. If they do, I'll give you a thumbs up.
Thank you. We'll move to staff. Scott Langford?
Thanks, Mayor. Over 25 and a half years ago, Bill Bailey came to work for the City of West Jordan. Tomorrow, he will be celebrating his retirement from 2:30 to 3:30, if you're available. Bill has worked tirelessly for a long time, and has functioned in many different capacities, and we congratulate him on his retirement. Elaine Western has accepted the position as the city's new building official, and so I just wanted to make the council aware of that. In addition to that, you'll notice in front of you, you all have new copies of the zoning distribution, and per your request, we've also updated the back of that sheet to have all the minimum living space requirements in each subzone. And as the council moves forward and as changes are made to the zoning, we'll be updating this as that takes place, and that's why you don't see it laminated, you see it in the individual sheet protectors for efficiency. So that's all I've got. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Dave?
Nothing to nightmare.
Would you like to make an announcement about some changes in interim personnel?
I would be honored, and it was last Friday, I sent out a notice to the employees that we named Dave Naylor as the interim Parks Director. Dave is a longtime member of this community, and one of the reasons this building looks so nice, his folks have really gone the extra mile to make the exterior look like a city hall. So I welcome Dave as the interim Parks Director. However, we lost our Parks Director who became the interim Public Works Director, so Brian Clegg is going to help us make sure our building's finished on time, the new Public Works building in July. He was welcomed by, with open arms, by all of the divisions. I received several emails from members of the Public Works, and the managers telling me they thought I made a good decision. I think I did too.
Thank you. So Dave, thank you, welcome. Eric?
Nothing to nightmare.
Hey, Brian?
Nothing tonight, other than I'm just learning my new responsibilities, so bear with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Peterson?
Nothing to nightmare, thank you.
Chief Davis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We recently had our annual fundraiser that we help out with, the Children's Justice Center, which is the Cops for Kids, where we partner with Sizzler to raise money. Unfortunately, the Sizzler here in our city closed up recently, so we had to move over to help South Jordan out and the district out there. But regardless of that, we still won like we do every year with the fundraiser and with all the other agencies. Just want to point out, we raised $4,400 between us and South Jordan, and the next closest one was West Valley of $4,000. Overall, we raised $15,000 for the Children's Justice Center, and we thank the community for helping to support us on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And then move to council reports, and start with councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I don't really have anything to report, other than I just wanted to thank the new faces that are handling some interim duties, and I have not been able to attend everybody's retirement parties. Still working, but I am very appreciative of the service, so I hope you share that. I haven't been to all of them, I've been to some. It's not picking and choosing, it's my work, so I do appreciate that. And I also just want to thank the staff that dealt with bringing the budget to us in April. I thought it was refreshing to have it a few weeks early, so I want to thank Eric and Bill and David for getting the budget to us early. I'm doing a budget at work and doing, looking over the city budget, so I'm, I've got a lot of numbers in my head, but I am very appreciative that we did get the budget early, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. I've lived off of the intersection of 1300 West and 78th South for 17 years now, and I think over 17 years, I've said, when are they going to fix this intersection? I don't think it was me personally as a citizen, but I think those of us who live in that area are really happy that it is done now. There were a few signs that went up a few weeks ago, and it said this intersection is closing, and I think a lot of people panicked, because they said, not another intersection closing in West Jordan. Luckily, it was just for one day, it was a Sunday, and when I see the intersection has widened, the 1300 West portion has been widened, so that there's nice turn lanes out to turn right or left on whichever side. So I do want to thank the Public Works Department for getting that together and making that happen, and I know that there are many citizens over there in my area that are very appreciative of the widened intersection now, especially with the apartments that are going in over there next to the Maverick. So thank you, and for those of you who get to drive in that area, you'll see how much nicer it is now, whether you're turning left or right on 1300 West. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to welcome the scouts that are here with us today, thank you for joining us, and as some of you may have heard, there was an announcement made on some changes with the scouts. I want you to know that I will continue to support the Voice, I'm sorry, Scouting USA, Scouts USA, Scouts PSA, whatever it is. I will continue to support them, I believe that's a good organization, and what they have done for the youth, and will continue to do for the youth is great. I've been involved in it in the last several years, without going through my sponsoring organization, just as an individual, and I'll continue to do that, because I think they are a great organization, so thank you, boys, for being part of that organization, and helping make a difference in our country. Also, councilmember Whitlock and I had an opportunity to do some training with the police the other day. They took us over to their fun playground, where we had screens surrounding around us, and we were put in some real-life scenarios, we had to make some quick decisions and solve some problems, and it just reiterated to me the importance it is that our officers have the training. I'm glad to know that West Jordan is one of the top cities providing training for officers, so they can handle these scenarios when they come. I didn't do near as well as they would do, so we're fortunate to have that training facility here for us to use, and the West Jordan used that, and we're fortunate to have fantastic police officers within our city, so thank you for that opportunity. And I got a call from a resident to tell me that the park's grass was way too long, so she called Brian Clegg, and she called him on a evening like 7:00 PM, and by 7:00 AM the next morning, she said there were lawn mowers out cutting the lawn over there at the park, over at Teton State Park, so thank you, Brian, for responding quickly for that resident, and getting our parks and keeping them look good. And David, now you can follow up on that. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. First thing, rodeo committee is gearing up for the events that are coming up less than two months from now. Yesterday, when we met, we went through the grounds and started looking at some of the things that needed to be done, where things are going to be placed, how we're going to improve from what we had last year, so nothing, nothing really requiring action from the council, just want everyone to know that they're still moving full steam ahead, so. The second item is, I had the opportunity Monday night to go out with our Public Works Department for one of the water shutdowns that they did on 70th, and spent the bulk of the evening with Cisco and Jeremiah, who are fantastic, and then the remainder of the time I spent with Jeremy, one of our inspectors. And that was incredibly eye-opening and educational, to see everything that's going on, all the different moving pieces associated with the construction going on there. Very much appreciate the effort that staff is putting forward, some of the extra hours, some of the odd schedules, things outside of their regular jobs that they're doing, to kind of step up and make sure that they're providing every possible opportunity for the contractor actually executing the project. Our staff is giving them every opportunity to be as successful as possible, so kudos to our staff, and thank you for what they've done, everyone from streets, water, utility, everybody is involved in that one, so thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, staff and council members. We'll now open citizen comments, and there are opportunities this evening for citizens to speak. We have several public hearings, so if you're here to address one of those public hearings, you can do it at that time. We have a three-minute limit when you come up to speak, so I'm going to begin with those that have signed up in advance, so we'll start with Steve Jones. Steve Jones, 3234 West, 6920 South, here in West Jordan. Mayor, council members. There's a few things going on within our city that I still struggle with. One of them is on the agenda tonight, I think, on the, on your business items to do with that stormwater fund. I know we've had lots of conversations with it over time, but the thing that really still gets me is, is we somehow seem to find money to do an array of projects, not only as a city, but also as a state. We seem to be charged for taxes, for our fuel, and somehow that gets run off to UTA to be able to change their name and spend $50 million. We seem to somehow find money to do bike lanes, and everything else under the sun, but for some reason, we can't find money to support our neighbors in something that is directly related to the running of this city, and I find that pretty disturbing. I also find it that it's interesting that we don't want to have a city cemetery, other than being privatized, but yet, we're going to have a cultural arts building that probably less than 15% of the citizens of West Jordan will ever use, but yet we seem to find $15 million to take care of that. You're my voice to our legislatures. I expect you to spend my money wisely. I think it's pretty ironic that we're spending a ton of money for these little things that, but yet we somehow, when we talk about budgets and stuff, we can't seem to find enough funds to pay people, our workers here, our police, our fire, our service providers, a livable wage, and I find that disturbing as well. There's people that put their lives on the line, but yet, we seem to find hundreds of thousands of dollars to pay somebody who's an at-will director, just to be let go down the road. The last thing I want to bring up is, we have letters going into our, out to our people from Dominion Energy on their letterhead, that has to do with inside water to their homes, and I think how deceptive that is. And I would expect that our city, since the city provides our water, that they would be able to tell Dominion to cease and desist in their practices that I'm sure are going to hook some people that are not as aware of what's going on. I have no others that have signed up to speak this evening, are there any, is there any in the audience who would like to address city council? Please come forward. Remember, you'll have three minutes, and give us your contact information, if you would.
So my name's Julia Glade, and my phone number is 801-916-3685, and I want to address Agenda Item 8C, the development of copper rim, and I want to address this because I live on 6376 West, Traveler Lane, which is in the Ocker Community up there on the hill. And one thing that, some things that I want to be addressed is, when building that community, I ask that the road that's there be widened, so that it can accommodate the traffic and the communities that are being built. There definitely needs to be more street lights for safety, as we have very few along that road, just going up and down by the corridor trail, and I'd ask that the West Jordan City plow the street, and right now, our community is not, it's under Salt Lake County, and I think it'd be great if West Jordan adopted us into their city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask that the phone number that was provided be stricken from the record?
Sure.
Unless she wants to share it with everyone.
All right. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak to council this evening? Seeing none, I will close the citizens' comments, and move to the consent items. Are there items that need to be pulled? I've been instructed that to pull F, as in Frank, and H, as in Hawaii. And I will... Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve all consent items, less F, as in Frank, and H, as in Hawaii, apparently.
Councilmember Lamb?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, the discussion to the motion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
On the items that were pulled, we'll start with F, and our city managers asked that I pull that one.
That's correct. We'll ask Mr. Wall and members of the attorney's office to get in touch with Salt Lake County and try to work out some issues that we've identified in the grant. Thank you.
Okay, so we will pull that one entirely off the agenda for tonight, then?
Yes, please, and we'll notify you when it's ready to be returned.
Okay. And H, councilmember Jacob has asked that one be pulled?
I have a question on the other one, if I may, before we move on.
Oh, sorry. Didn't see that, sorry, go ahead.
If we delay this, will that affect us receiving those funds from the county with this delay? If we delay this, will it affect us receiving those funds from the county?
It will not, if we don't act, if we don't act within a reasonable amount of time, the county could pull the money, but we will be certainly back before that time period would run. We're going to get quick answers to our questions from the county, I'm hoping it will be back within the next 30 days.
Thank you.
Okay, now councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason why I wanted to pull this is because it's a policy discussion that I felt that we should have a discussion about before we just rubber stamp this one, and this is, I mean, the topic here is whether at-will, whether and how much, or how we want to structure a severance package, policy for all at-will employees. There's a list of at-will employees in this ordinance, as well as, I guess it's not in the ordinance, it's in the discussion, as well as a three-month severance package, just kind of built in for any reason, except for, except for conviction of a crime of moral turpitude. Any at-will employee who departs the city gets a three-month severance package, just de facto, and I wasn't sure that that was something we wanted to pass without talking about at first. So I'll throw out my opinion, and then we can discuss. Two, two pieces of this, one is the list of the at-will employees. It strikes me as interesting that some, and there's several department heads here, which makes sense, there are also several executive assistants to department heads, but not to all the department heads. heads. So that was something that struck me as a little weird. For example, we have a community services manager, but we don't have a community services manager's executive assistant. Yet the police executive assistant, the community preservation executive assistant is listed, but not the community service manager executive assistant. And I don't know if that position has one or doesn't have one, but I'm just wondering if we need this list set in stone, or, you know what I mean? If this is, if we need this list specified out this way, as, especially as the form of government is changing and staff levels are kind of in flux, you know, exactly who's going to have what kind of position. So that's point number one. And point number two is, three months for severance for any at-will employee, for any reason, unless they're convicted of a crime. I've been an at-will employee at every job I've ever had. And I've quit jobs, I've been fired from jobs, or, let's say, let go. I was downsized a few times. I was fired once. And never once was I offered any severance package from any of these. I agree, we need to be competitive with our employees, with the private sector, that many of our very talented employees could go work in the private sector and do quite well. However, I've worked in the private sector my whole life, and again, that's never been an option for me. I'm not saying there shouldn't be something, but I was thinking, if I go out, if I'm a department head and I go out and find another job, or I'm offered a job in another city or in the private sector, and I accept it, I can quit and I can double-dip for three months. I get two salaries. I get my current salary and I get the new job salary, because I wasn't convicted of a crime of moral turpitude. So I think there may need to be a change in here, something about if it's a voluntary separation, it's not for cause, they don't, you know, if it's somebody quitting for their own personal decision, whatever, I don't think that we automatically should have written into city code a three-month severance package. So I'll throw that out there for discussion and see where this goes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. So David, maybe you can just clarify for me and others. In paragraph A, it says, "If an appointed at-will employee signs a severance acknowledgement." So it's not, it's not quitting, it's at-will, we're not continuing forward. This isn't something where I would, I shouldn't say "I." An at-will employee who quits wouldn't get severance. It's, we're making a change, and that's when the severance would apply. Is that correct?
That is correct. If an employee walks in and says, "I've got a better opportunity to go somewhere else," and they leave, they give us notice, they would not pick up the severance. The severance is there to replace those rights that merit employees perceive as a due process. Many, many years ago, the United States Supreme Court decided that employment within cities, counties, and state government is a constitutionally protected right. Whether we agree with it or not, that's the reality. Merit employees, if are, if terminated, have an ability to appeal that termination and can be actually ordered back by courts if it's determined that their termination was improper. At-will employees waive all those rights. They are literally, as Councilman Jacob pointed out, working every day at-will. So part of that is incentive to incentivize people to come and stay and work in cities, counties, and state government if they are in an at-will position, is that severance package. It's often assumed that if they're making tough decisions, ones that are not popular, ones that are politically not popular, then all they have to rest on is if made and not appreciated, and they are terminated, all they get is that severance package.
Okay, and then my second question is, on those list of positions, and I'm not asking for an exact number, but say, over the last five years, how many, how many at-will positions that are on that list have, I know it's not including any severance or anything, but basically, I guess, how many at-will people, employees on that list have been, were going a different direction?
That was something that was interesting. When I was hired two years ago, all of the attorneys in the Attorney's Office by state law were at-will. They were all deputy city attorneys. In theory, your city could have fired every attorney, including the city attorney, and not have given a cause. But that was based on the language of, at that time, the city recognized as deputies. It's been my goal since arriving here to sort of solidify and identify those employees who have merit protection. And so presently, the attorneys are our assistant city attorneys, which, recognized by state law, have merit protection, other than the city attorney. So that is similar to the list that Councilman Jacob pointed out. We have been trying to identify those employees who truly are deserving of that at-will designation. Because as pointed out by, also, the comments by Councilman Jacob, as we move towards a change of government, a good number of those individuals listed will actually move over to the merit standing. But right now, as we sit here tonight, a lot of these employees that are listed are recognized at merit. And you've hired several of them over on the other side of the room, and they've wondered, what does that mean? I'm trying to bring West Jordan up to that standard, which is the equivalent of Salt Lake, Sandy, other locations who have merit, have at-will employees, but have a definition of what it is they're entitled to if they're terminated. So I guess I will represent, as we move towards that ultimate change in 2020, that list that you see could be significantly less. That's the goal.
Okay, and then my question was roughly, how many employees that were at-will have been terminated, let go, as an at-will employee over, say, the last five years? And I'm not asking for a specific number, but in other words, how often has this been implemented previously?
I am only aware of one employee who was terminated, who was an at-will, the attorney. The city attorney was terminated some time ago. That's the only one that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Due to the number of public hearings, I'll keep my comments brief and not rehash too much else, other than the time on here, rather than three calendar months, I would feel more comfortable with something like four weeks. In any case, I prefer to see the language in weeks rather than months, just because if it's one day versus a different day, it could end up as an additional four weeks if it were a month. But just for clarity and appropriateness, I would say four weeks instead of the three months. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question for clarification, then, after the discussion that just happened. I'm just trying to decide exactly what paragraph A actually says here. An appointed at-will employee must sign a severance acknowledgement within 45 days of today, if this passes, right? In order to have this safety net put in place. Is that correct? So that's question one. Okay? And then question two, and is terminated for any reason other than malfeasance? So this does not include a voluntary separation? This only includes an involuntary separation?
That is correct. They would be, an individual that would normally say, "I want to keep this job," and the city manager would say, "I can't work with you anymore, I've lost trust."
Whatever the reason is.
Whatever the reason.
Okay. So they don't necessarily have to be convicted, but they do have to be let go from the city? I interpreted that phrase the other way, as in, anytime there's a separation from either side. So I don't know if we can clarify, like, involuntarily terminated or involuntarily, whatever the right phrasing is, with that involuntarily terminated, so that somebody doesn't come back and say, you know, "I was let go, but you, instead of letting me go, said, 'I'm asking for your resignation.'" You know what I mean? So that there's, so that there's clarification in the language?
Absolutely. I think we can help the council identify that language separation with a little more clarity, if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you. And I agree with much of what Councilmember McConaughey said. I like a period of weeks instead of months. A shorter period would be my preference, but again, that's just a preference.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Since nobody else's name is popping up, I will make a motion and move to approve Ordinance 18-13 with the following modifications. First change is that, that section for separation payment, paragraph A, includes the word involuntarily prior to terminated. So it's effective date of this ordinance and is involuntarily terminated for any other, for any reason, and so on. And then, under paragraph A, section two, instead of three calendar months of salary, it would read four weeks of salary.
Councilmember Anderson?
Second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Anderson?
I just, I don't know how I'm going to vote yet, because I don't know that I like the four weeks. We don't use this very much. However, on the Part A, if the Councilmember McConaughey would be open to the verbiage instead of involuntarily terminated, the more appropriate human resource term of involuntary separation, if you'd be amenable to that?
Yes. Yeah. So to modify, to make it a little easier for the clerk, I'll amend the motion, and the only change I'll make now is section A, or paragraph A, the effective date of this ordinance and is involuntarily separated for any reason, dot, dot, dot. And then, of course, with the subsection, or section two, four weeks of salary instead of the three calendar months.
Seconds still stand?
If it's a substitute motion, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, then let's vote.
Sorry. Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
No.
Mayor Wrighton?
No.
The vote passes four to three in favor.
We will now move to our public hearings. Public hearing item 8A, receive public input and consider for approval, Resolution 18-87 regarding funding recommendations of the West Jordan CDBG Home Committee for Fiscal Year 2018-2019 as part of the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan. Checkover.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The staff has completed the CDBG committee process once again this year that we do annually. We've had three committee meetings, and the committee was very active with questions and interviews with all of the applicants that submitted requests for funding. The PowerPoint that I have tonight... We can get it going, Scott.
There you go.
If you want to hit them, that'll be fine for them. The difference that you'll actually see in the presentation tonight and your council report was originally HUD had received a 9% allocation increase this year, which they anticipated passing on to all of the communities. After the, after dividing all the monies up with the new cities coming into the program, we actually only received a 8% increase. So actually, we ended up receiving $43,720 more this year than we did last year in the allocation. So our allocation this year was $612,606. We have that combined with our housing revolving loan for housing rehab projects of $40,000 and prior year funds of $50,000, giving us a total budget of $702,606. Scott? We received applications this year from pretty much the usual application, usual applicants and sub-grantees, with the exception of one or two. Funding this year that the committee recommended is $15,000 for South Valley Sanctuary, for the Resource Center and the shelter, $12,000 for League Aid Society of Salt Lake, Family Support Center Crisis Nursery, $12,000, the Road Home, $8,000 for the homeless shelter operations. The Community Action Program for the South Valley Emergency Food Pantry requested $6,000 and recommendation is $6,000 there. And the In-Between, which is a new agency that started probably about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, provides hospice care services to West Jordan residents. Since they're new, just kind of getting their feet wet, the committee allocated $5,000 for them in the program. The Community Action assistance program requested 10, which we fulfill that request. The one that we had an issue with, while it's a very good organization and the service they provide is joyful, welcome, and they provide infant packages or baskets to newborns at the hospital. The issue that the committee had there was, they're not tracking, or they don't have the ability at this point in time to track, to certify that the applicant receiving the money is low to moderate income, and they don't have documentation as to the address. Now, they do some income verification, but it's within a range and not very documented. And they do location by zip code. And so the committee felt that they weren't quite ready, so we talked to them a little bit at the committee meeting, told them to work on it, and we welcome looking at them again next year, when we have funding again. The Columbus Foundation was a new one that requested some building rehabilitation money, and the committee recommended $6,390 there. The YWCA Crisis Shelter located in Salt Lake, which serves a lot of our women that are victims of domestic violence, requested $10,000, which we recommended. Big Brothers and Big Sisters, their, this program is very active in the city of West Jordan, we proposed $7,500. And that kept us under our 15% public service cap. We cannot spend in excess of 15% of that monies, the total allocation for public service agencies. And we always top it out at the max that we can do. These agencies all do fantastic work, and for the little bit of money that we give them, we probably get anywhere from four to five times to 50 times in return the value. The city of West Jordan, we're allowed to request 20% of our annual allocation, which could have been $122,000 this year. The request with the budget office is $105. That pays for training, salaries, benefits, and travel for the program year. That keeps us under the 20% cap, plus the city adds a little extra money in, so I can do other projects other than CDBG. The city of West Jordan has two more payments on the Section 108 loan for $190,000, which is the West Jordan Senior Center. So in two years, that'll be paid in full after 20 years, and we'll have an additional $190,000 at that point to allocate each year. The last programs that we have, one more, Scott, is the housing rehabilitation program is self-funded. So every housing rehab loan that we make to people in West Jordan... So every housing rehab loan that we make to people in West Jordan at some point in time, if they're elderly, handicapped, it's a zero percent interest loan, and they pay it back when they either sell the home or pass away. If they're under sixty-two, we set up a repayment schedule for them. And that's where the forty thousand is set aside every year, and we take the funds that we need every year from there based on requests that we receive. The Down Payment Assistance Program, home buyer program, we have monies left over last year. We're revamping the program this year because the excessive price of housing is increasing, it's outpacing eligibility. So we're only asked for forty thousand from this year of CDBG, and we have a carryover of fifty thousand from last year, which will adequately more than fund the program. We always try and do ADA ramp construction, which we tie to the city overlay program. This allows the street department to actually overlay more streets with us doing the ADA ramp constructions in these areas. And then, the final request was for a hundred and fifty thousand from the assist program, which is an increase from last year. But the demand for assists to do emergency home repairs plus the cost of construction is rising so fast that they're just barely maintaining a above board to provide all the repairs to residents in West Jordan. That's basically our recommendation, the committee's recommendations this year. And I'm open to any questions or comments the committee may have. I mean, the council, I'm sorry.
I'll start with a couple of questions, Chuck. On these last four, were the city of West Jordan, city of West Jordan, city of West Jordan, and the assist, every year, do you, do you pretty much use all that money up in allocations to different folks that come in and apply?
No, that's like the home buyer, that's why we have the fifty thousand carryover from this current year into next year. We didn't have the demand because of the housing prices increases, and so we just carry it forward to this year instead of asking for the usual hundred thousand.
But how about housing rehabilitation, the first one? That forty thousand, did that get eaten up last year?
No, we only did one housing rehab last year, and we spent about ten thousand, fifteen thousand out of the revolving loan account. We have ongoing revolving loan account, and we average out requesting forty thousand a year. But that's the only activity that we can fund without.
Okay, councilmember Anderson's got a question.
Thank you. Just, just a question on the home buyer assistance program.
Yes.
Do you recall, was it the fifty thousand that was allocated last year that was not used, and so we're just rolling it over?
We allocated a hundred thousand, and by the time the year ends, I think we have one or two more applications coming in. Right now, we're around forty thousand, forty-two thousand. So we're ballparking fifty that we'll spend this year, and that would leave a balance of fifty.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you, Chuck.
Thanks, Mayor.
At this time, I will open this issue for a public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to address the council on this issue? Please come to the microphone, and you'll have, again, you'll have three minutes, and give us your contact information. We'll have the lights on again, please.
Sure. So my name is Tony Milner. I'm the director of case management housing at an organization called Utah Community Action, which is listed up here as community action program. I just want to be here on behalf of our organization tonight to say thank you so much to Chuck and all the work that he does with the committee for these recommendations, as well as kind of thank the mayor and the council as well for these recommendations. This work is very important that we do. Basically, the funding with the CDBG is going to be helping us with our, one of our food pantries, as well as our rent assistance program and housing case management. With our food pantry, we'll serve about twelve thousand households per year with about six million pounds of food. With our housing case management program, we're serving individuals who are either currently homeless or about to be homeless, about to lose their apartment. We intervene with case management and rent assistance. Both clientele that we're serving are very vulnerable. They are seniors, they are elder, they are disabled, they are young families. We do extreme, really intensive vetting programs and eligibility to make sure that if but our services, they would be in really hard situations. And so I really just want to greatly thank the council and the mayor, and again, Chuck and the recommendation committee for helping us bring these important and vital services to the residents of West Jordan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to council on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the, the comments, there's some comments at this time on the public hearing. And councilmember Whitelock?
I would like to move that we approve resolution eighteen dash eighty-seven, funding recommendations for the CDBG Home Committee for fiscal year 2018-19.
Councilmember Burton?
Second, I'd like to make a comment if I may, Mayor.
Okay, we have a, well, we have a motion and a second, so discussion to the motion. Councilmember Burton.
Thank you. Chuck, if you would pass on to the committee our thanks for the work they did on helping distribute this money and to go through each of these organizations and to meet with them and talk with them and decide the value they have with the residents here in West Jordan. All of these groups and organizations provide a fantastic benefit to some of the most needy and people that we have in the city. And to see that we are taking care of them and recognizing they're here and providing these, these services for them, I think is fantastic. So thank you for making that happen.
Seeing no other comments, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Wrighton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
And this is an invitation to staff as well as city council. Anytime that you would like to visit one of these agencies, they are more than willing to welcome you to come visit them and show you what they do. And I'm more than welcome to go with you and to set it up for you. I just want to extend the invitation to you guys. Thanks for everything.
Thanks, Chuck.
Mayor, may I interrupt just to say, if a council member takes Chuck up on his offer, will you please let Kim know so that we can at least take some pictures, put it on Facebook, and verify what the people are getting as a result of these funds? It's probably important to share on Facebook and our website. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to public hearing, item eight B, receive public input and consider for approval, resolution eighteen dash eighty-eight regarding a waiver of fees for the Best Buddies Friendship Walk at Veterans Memorial Park, October thirteenth, 2018. Dave Naylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Best Buddies International is requesting a waiver of fees to host their friendship walk over at Veterans Memorial in the amount of six hundred and fifty dollars. Staff is presenting this application for council to either approve or deny this application. Thank you.
Are there questions for staff? Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. Is this the first time that they have come to the city? Or how many years have they done this, and have they had fees waived in the past?
Yes, they approached the council and mayor last year, and also had their fees waived last year too. So this will be the second year that they've had their fees waived if approved?
One more question, if I may.
Go ahead.
The deposit last year, we waived the deposit. Would they have gotten it back if they'd have paid it? Were they a good, good tenant of the park?
Yes, they, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Lamb?
No questions, but I move to approve resolution dash eighteen.
We have to have a public hearing.
I'm getting ahead of myself.
Okay. This time, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this issue? Please come to the microphone. And you'll have three minutes, and if you'll give us your contact information, please.
Okay, my name is Al Richard, seventy-one oh three South River Road. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Before I start, I'd like to say congratulations to Dave and Brian. So I've known these two guys for a little while, so it's great to see that they got promoted up. Yes, Zach, for your question, last year, we did ask to have the fees waived. The fees were a lot higher. I believe they were over two thousand dollars. We actually applied for a mass gathering permit last year because we thought we was going to have at least over five hundred plus walkers, which we did not. We only had about two, two hundred, so we're pretty much except realizing we'll probably have about the same amount. So for those of you who do not know what Best Buddies is, Best Buddies has been around since nineteen eighty-one. It was started by Anthony K. Schreiber. And it is a, it's a one-to-one friendship program that, where we pair special needs kids up with non-special needs, and they range from Down Syndrome to autism to Asperger's, fragile X, brain damage. Really, Best Buddies will not turn any child away. And we pair them up with kids that we have in high school and colleges, and they end up becoming friends for life, basically. I got involved with this a year ago, thanks to Jared, that's standing here next to me, and just fell in love with the kids. And this is our second year that we're asking to hold the walk here. The park was a great facility for us. We had our national director come in from Florida. She was very impressed with how beautiful the park was. The walk is perfect. We just walk around the sidewalk one time. Usually after that, the kids are done. All they want to do is hang out and have fun. So we'd like to ask tonight if you guys would please consider waiving the fee of the six hundred and fifty dollars so we can hold the walk here again. We lost a little bit of money last year because we did have to pay. We couldn't find donations for stage, tents, different things like that. So we lost, I think it was close to around twenty-five hundred bucks. We were at least able to double our, what we raised from the year before, which was nine thousand. And I think we ended up bringing in close to about nineteen thousand last year. But every little penny helps because eighty-four cents of every dollar that's made here in this state stays here in this state to run our chapters. So if you guys could help us out, we would be greatly, greatly appreciated. See if we have any questions. Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And councilmember Jacob?
Thank you. I had one more question for staff. And that is, the setup and cleaning, the hundred and fifty dollars for setup and cleaning, is there, is there an impact to the park that is above and beyond what would normally have to go on as far as, you know, maintenance of the park on a daily basis? Is there an impact here that justifies a hundred and fifty dollar fee for setup and cleaning?
Generally, we have an on-call person that will travel into the event and just ensure that gardens, cans, bathrooms, and all that stuff are cleaned. We do spend a little extra time to make sure and ensure that the event is, is going to be sufficiently manned and the park is going to be in pristine order for the event. So there is a little extra care placed into when there's events into the park versus just our general weekend duties.
I appreciate that. Thank you. My, my comment, then, before the motion is made, is I, I try to make the decision on these fee waivers based on, not on the worthiness of the organization, or the, or how deserving they are, or how nice they are, or who it is, but rather what the effect is on the city and should there be the fee there in the first place? And are they providing a service that's not going to be there otherwise? So I just want that to be clear, that I'm not, you know, whichever way I vote on any given application like this, it's not a reflection on who you are, who the applicant is, or the worthiness of their cause. It's, for me, it's a, I have to judge the principle of why the fees are being charged versus should they be waived, you know, should the fee be there in the first place, kind of a thing. So I just wanted to make that perfectly clear, and I'll let the motion be made.
Councilmember Lamb?
I think I'll make that motion again. I move to approve resolution eighteen dash eighty-eight.
Councilmember Burton? We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Anderson?
I just had a question. I'm glad that these come up each time, and, and I do have a child with, with some, with a disability. And so I'm grateful that we have a park, that we're able to do that. And as I look at the request for the six hundred and fifty, I mean, it's five hundred for a deposit, which I'm assuming you have, bring the park back to how it was when you got there. And then the hundred and fifty dollar fee for setup and cleaning, which I know they're more than capable of doing. So I'm going to be supportive of the resolution, and I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock?
And I struggle with these, and they seem to come by our city a lot. And a lot of people like to use our parks, and I can't help but wonder if one of the reasons they don't like to use our city is because we do waive fees and our neighboring cities do not. And when I, currently, we're undergoing the budget, and, you know, every dollar counts, and I have to decide, do I waive fees? Do I get another crossing guard? And it, and it's not my money to begin with. It's not my money I'm giving away. It's Mr. Jones' money, and he reminds us of that, and I'm glad he does. But, so, everyone that comes before us, they're all good causes, and they're all good people. But it adds up to a lot of money at the end of the year. And so, I too have a son with disabilities. He, he could use a best buddy. But I'm going to have to vote no, just because on principle, I, I feel like it's not my money to give away. And in the end, it's only a hundred and fifty dollars for the organization, and I know every penny counts. It also counts for our city.
Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Wrighton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
The vote passes six to one in favor.
Public hearing, item eight C, receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance eighteen dash fourteen regarding a preliminary development plan for copper rim development located at approximately the northwest corner of seventy-eight hundred south and fifty-eight hundred west in the PC zoning district. CW Land, colon, Wright, applicant, Scott Langford.
Thanks, Mayor and council. This is a large master planned community, as you've seen in your packet, just over two hundred acres. The property was rezoned recently. This is the next step. This is the preliminary development plan. With this development plan, you're locking in the, the number of units, a lot of the amenities and those types of things. So to go over those, in, in summary, I've asked Ray McCandless to be here to go over that application. The applicant is also here, and I'm sure he'll want a few minutes after Ray's done presenting, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As Scott mentioned, this is a request for preliminary development plan approval of the copper rim planned community. Again, just to orient you with the site, it's located between seventy-eight south and seventy-eight hundred south, just on the east side of the Mountain View corridor. As Scott mentioned, it's a little over two hundred acres, so it's a fairly substantial addition to the city. What I'll do this evening is just kind of walk you through the site, the layout, the number of units that are being proposed, and go into a little bit of detail on, on what was in the concept on the preliminary development plan. So this is a land use map. To the north, there is some apartments here, a school here. To the south, the property is vacant across seventy-eight hundred south currently. To the west, as I mentioned earlier, is the Mountain View corridor. And then to the east, there are kind of a, quite a variety of different types of land uses that are identified on. that are identified on our future land use map, high-density residential, medium residential, low-density residential, so it almost runs the gamut. So what you'll be looking at is whether or not, how this fits into what we envision on the future land use map, whether it's compatible and consistent with what we envision down the road. In terms of the, I know this is a lot of information, but I'll just kind of summarize what's on it. The total number of units, we've got 753 for this 200 acres. Number of single-family dwellings, we've got 456 in the area that's up here as part of Phase 9. We've got 204 units that'll be for senior housing, and then there will be 93 townhomes that'll be scattered throughout the development. So you can see those townhomes are located here, there's some here, there's some up on the north end of the property. There will be 10 phases, including a commercial phase, which is located here. It's right at the large commercial phase. And then there's also an institutional phase, which is located here. Through the development, it's kind of crisscrossed with two streets, and these are going to be collector's streets that'll run north-south and tie 70th to 7800 South. And then there will also be an east-west connection, which is also a collector's street. As you can see on the map here, there's just a couple of little areas that are where the slopes are over 30%. Those are the areas that are shown in the red here. Those are undevelopable and have been incorporated into open space. There are 37 acres of open space, which is roughly 18% of the site, and the PC zoning district requires 15% of open space in the PC zone. As far as the commercial area, that's, it's 38.4 acres, and the applicant has provided us with a couple of examples of what might go there. They're actively marketing the property, but we're just, they're not sure how, just how that will develop. But those, the site plan for the commercial phase of development will come in probably piece by piece, and will have to be approved through the standard site plan review process and subdivision review processes through the planning commission. I think I've got a couple of, a couple of slides to show that commercial development. So, again, this is how the property is laid out. In the blue here is the area that's called, is identified as medium-density residential, commercial area here, res, commercial area here, this is the water tank, and then the very high-density residential up on the north side across the apartments. This is, the type of residential development is actually broken up into two different types. One of those is what they call a cottage lot. Those range in size from 5,000 to roughly 11,000 square feet. There are 318 of those, and then there's what they call the preserve lots, which are the larger lots ranging in size from 8,000 to 23,000 square feet. And there are 138 of those, and as I mentioned before, they're 93 townhome units. This is a copy of the phasing plan, again, to show in phases. And some examples of what will be built on the properties. These are just examples of the single-family preserve lots. 70-foot lot width is an average 120 feet, so these are all front-loaded with the two-car garages that are, that are accessible from the alley. Just another example of the preserve lots, or homeowner preserve lots. These are the smaller lots, the cottage lots, and some examples of what will be developed and built on those lots. Those will be an average of 45 feet width, they'll be alley-loaded with a garage being accessed, or accessed from, from a rear alley. Couple of other slides, quickly. And we can go back to any of those if you'd like. This is just an example of the, one of the townhome developments, two and a half to three stories. The applicant is requesting that the maximum building height on the three-story buildings be at 40 feet, just to be able to accommodate a more architectural flair to these buildings rather than just go up to three stories and have a flat roof. So we don't have any concerns with that. This is just an example of the, of the townhome development is, is here. You should notice the, there will be either a 20-foot setback here, they all have two-car garages. There will be either a 20-foot setback, and then there'll be an additional two feet. Remember, these are alley-loaded here for visitors to be able to park in those, those spaces behind the garage. Or there'll be only three feet, which will discourage any parking from those. There'll also be guest parking that's available on the site as well to be able to handle overflow parking for those units. The typical, so those are the townhome setbacks, the preserve lot setbacks, I think are, I think they're 20, 22 feet. That's what that says. And then, I can almost read that, in the back there, it's 18 feet.
25.
25, okay, so there's plenty of area there for cars and guests to be able to park behind those lots. These would be alley, these would be smaller cottage lots, again, with the 20-foot setback for those garages that are here, the two-foot overhang, there's enough room for guest vehicles. And then for those with the detached garages in the back, they're put fairly close within three feet of the right-of-way line. So, all in all, we think that this is a, a good layout, a good lot layout for this development. Just simply because the garages will all be located in the backs of the houses, they won't be visible from the front, and we just think that it works out well. This is just shows you where the guest parking will be located here. In terms of amenities, there'll be an amphitheater, community gardens, pool, clubhouse, parks, playgrounds, trails, and then natural open space. These are just the public versus the private use areas. These are the, where the amenities will be located here. So there'll be three tot lots, a community garden, and the pool and parking area will be, the clubhouse will be located down here towards the south. I think that's one of the few, the things that they want to do is actually start or include some of the amenity packages up front. I think one of the problems in the past is that, in some cases, those amenity packages have been put off till the final phases, and then it's been a problem installing those. But I think with this development, they're going to be putting those in with the first couple of phases. There'll also be a trail system through the property, so pedestrian access will be, will be good. As you see, it goes up through the wash, connects on through up to 70th South. There are, they'll also use the existing sidewalk, and then there is a regional trail that extends along the east side of the Mountain View corridor that this development will connect in with. So we like those pedestrian connections there as well. These are just examples of fencing, where those will be located, and those are in your packets. This is, as I mentioned earlier, is just the concept oriented of the commercial development. But as I mentioned, this will probably change, just depending on what the market conditions dictate. Just another part of the commercial development. In terms of the overall density, within the area that was shown as medium-density residential, the net density is 4.3 dwelling units per acre. And that density is calculated excluding roads, parking areas, and then slopes over 30%. There are 512 dwelling units proposed within the area designated as medium-density residential, and then giving that, a net density in that area of 4.9 dwelling units per acre, which is within the medium-density residential as shown in the general plan. The overall density is 4.9 dwelling units per acre, and we go into detail on that in your staff reports. As we also know in your staff reports, we really don't have any set findings that you have to make in order to, on the preliminary plan development. But we've listed some, I think there are 14 items in your packet. The project meets those 14 criteria, and we do think that, that this will be a great addition to the city. The only, and we recommend approval subject of the preliminary development plan, subject to those criteria that are listed on page two of your staff reports. The only thing as a modification that I'd like to make is just to item number eight in there, we talked about UDOT approval. That was written before the planning commission hearing. We had some issues with the bridge, the future, future bridge that crosses the Mountain View corridor, because we hadn't heard back from UDOT, and now we have a letter that indicates that they're okay with the preliminary alignment of the bridge that goes over. So that item could be moved, removed from that list, if you so choose. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And there are some questions for you, Ray. I will start with Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Ray.
You knew I'd have something to say. Of course. I have a lot of questions. The first one, can we slide backwards to the, the amenities, one more, or that one? The one with the blue and the, yeah. So is that, is that indicating that the majority of the open space is for private use? In other words, all those trails, all those, all that open space will be for the residents of this development only? Not for public use?
It lists it as, my understanding is it will all be owned by a homeowners association. It's not going to be fenced off. So when they say for private use, I mean, you can ask, you'd be, you're welcome to ask the applicant on that, but my understanding is that it would be just not closed off to just general public use.
Okay, that's my secondary concern. My main concern has to do with the bridges you just mentioned, well, transportation in general. So first, the bridge from the, from the main east-west collector here through the middle of this, through that roundabout in the middle, across Mountain View, is that timing going to be, you know, commensurate with the build-out of the project? Do we have any projected timeframe on the, on when the city will have the funds to go up to the bridge? And then UDOT's going to put the bridge in, or, or how that timeframe is going to mesh with this project?
With, with that, it's our understanding that the developer would be required to build up to the right-of-way at some point, that that bridge would be a UDOT bridge, so it'll go over the Mountain View corridor. That's, that's at least my understanding.
Right, and the city will, but the city will be responsible for the other end? Or unless there's some development going in that I don't know about.
Another development, correct?
Right.
Much like the bridge that we're talking about on 8600 South currently, that we've been talking about for a couple of years now.
If you need more information about that, Dave Murphy, as I'm sure well-versed in the contract, the EIS that talks about the construction of that bridge.
I saw him sitting back there. Hi, Dave. What, come back to that in just a second. The third, and this might be more of a Dave question as well. The third question was, we heard in citizen comments about 70th South, and I'm sure you know, the further west you go on 70th South, it turns from arterial to collector to basically a neighborhood street that's basically a half-width neighborhood street up at the very top. What are the plans on 70th South? I mean, we're putting in this development plan, it's a high, very high-density residential at the, what is right now basically a neighborhood residential street. I like high density when it's on arterial streets, major intersections. This does not fit that criteria in my book. So in that, in that vein, what is the, what's the future of 70th South? Is that going to cross Mountain View and connect into Tobaqas Highway? What, what's the, what's the plan there?
I think the major connection is going to be through the middle of the project, through, through that bridge. I don't know whether or not there are any plans, Dave might be able to answer that. Whether there are any plans to go, build another bridge over 70th South?
Somebody's walking up behind you.
In the EIS for Mountain View corridor, there is another bridge at 70th South that is slated to go in, that is cleared through the Mountain View corridor EIS. It is not funded yet, and we have not been working on that area yet because this is in the future phases of this development. We have been working on the bridge at 7400 South, and we do have a clearance letter for preliminary design already that was put forward by the developer for the bridge over 74th. That one will connect with Mount, U11 sooner than the one at 70th will. So timing here is about 10 years out with that second bridge at 70th. Development plan-wise, I don't know how soon it will develop up all the way from 78th to the north there to that high-density portion.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, Dave. One more question for Ray. The first phase of this development here, is that mainly, my main accent, my main concern with this development from the very beginning has been access. So that Phase 1, that is that kind of north, or kind of easternmost piece there, is that going to connect under the power lines into the, another development that is to the, because it's north of the commercial?
No, you're right on on that. There'll be two points of, well, with this, these first initial phases, there'll be two points of access, one off at 7800 South from that collector's street, and then the one where Scott is pointing to, that at the form, the actual alignment hasn't been quite established yet. I think they're looking along the south side of that wash, but it will connect into, there is a, it's on our transportation master plan to have that as a collector's street connecting through, so that will happen.
Okay, can you go back to the phasing slide? I think it's one or two slides back from where you are, other going, other, maybe three, maybe four? I think it's the other direction.
It's the other direction, there. We'll get it here.
Oh, I forgot all the house pictures that are in there.
There we go.
There you go, perfect. Okay, so Phase 1 does include all the way up to 7800 South, and that's supposed to be a fully signalized intersection at 78th on this plan, is that correct? Not a roundabout, right? Just double-checking that, I'm not sure a light that close to Mountain View is going to be that great either. Is that going to be a signalized intersection at the very beginning? Like, as soon as it's put in, that's fully signalized, or is it going to be?
I think that's going to be handled as the traffic counts warrant, so it may not be put in initially, but...
So it'd be, it would probably be a stop sign, a one-way stop sign to start with?
Until there's sufficient traffic to warrant saying.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions I have as well. First one is, the trails, will they be paved?
The ones that, the ones that are going through the development, through the wash, will need to be paved. They'll make, they'll need to meet engineering standards for trails, which typically requires a pavement.
So in the wash, well, down inside of that gully, right there where the arrow's pointing now to Phase 1, that will be paved?
That's my understanding.
Okay, and then the trail along the Mountain View corridor, it shows that on here, is that the trail that's already existing, or is that an additional trail?
That's the one that's existing.
Okay, and then, but was looking at those pictures, those pictures look fantastic. I can't figure out where the lake is going to fit in of these, I was looking at the pictures, but they look really nice. And also, I've noticed there were big gaps, spaces between those houses. But what is the real space between the houses on these?
If, so looking here, it's a fairly standard subdivision lots, as you can see up on here. It's, for example, part of Phase 2. Where that's, where those separations would be, would be through here, there's a, an area. Through here, there's an area, you can see these little green spaces that are located between those. So I think that's what those are trying to depict.
Okay. What is the minimum that the city permits between two residences?
In this case, it'll be five feet. Not between the residents, it'd be from the house to the property line. So it'd be 10 feet total. So it'd be ten feet total.
And is that, that's not standard? That's different? Than standard?
It, it depends on what zone that you're in, because the smaller zones like R-15, I think, requires a minimum of five feet. So it's not unusual to have that, that kind of a separation.
And are they doing the minimum that we're permitting them to do?
They're doing the minimum of five feet.
Okay.
On the smaller lots.
Can you help me understand what a top lot is?
It's a, it's a, it's not a full playground with the larger equivalent, it's just basically for smaller children, or younger children. So it's not a full, full-out playground where you might have slides, but it's just kind of a smaller version of that.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
And Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I don't know how my, my button turned off, but thank you for recognizing me. I just had a couple of questions. Mine is twofold. Number one, the commercial phase, and number two, the traffic-transportation. So Phase Nine is, I'm assuming based on the notes in the packet, that's probably senior housing overlay, high-density senior apartments is what I'm supposing. I'm just wondering, since Seventy-Eighth South really stubs at Airport Road, and I, I don't know the transportation patterns of senior housing, but I just, I just worry that the, if, if you're choosing to go east and west in the city, Seventy-Eighth South ends at Airport Road. So I don't know exactly how that's going to work. You're not going to have an interchange to Mountain View at the, the bridge that's outlined here about seventy-four hundred south. And I believe the elevation is too great from Seventieth to Mountain View to do any kind of interchange. Yeah, that's, that's what I thought. So the only access to Mountain View, if I want to go north and south, is to traverse the entire project to get to Seventy-Eighth, to get onto Mountain View to go north and south, or to go to Seventy-Eighth to go east and west. That, that's pretty reasonable, commonsensical. So, so I do worry about that. The distance between the on-ramp at Mountain View and Seventy-Eighth South at the bottom of the screen in the commercial phase to the distance of the street, I don't know what that distance is, but I, I worry about rush hour, people getting home, plugging up that area, but I, I don't have a traffic study to, to know, but that seems tight to me. And then I don't know if it would be better to swap Phase Nine into some of that commercial phase and have two commercial phases, something that's a little more resident, or what do they, what do we call it? Residential, commercial, or neighborhood commercial, upward Phase...
Little higher densities?
What's that?
Little higher density, my bad.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm just thinking if Phase Nine took some of the space in the commercial phase and split the commercial phase, so some's on ninety, or some's on Seventieth up where Phase Nine is, so that our residents that live up that way have a neighborhood commercial space, and you've got, you know, I don't know what the, just bring Phase Nine into the commercial phase and, and separate commercial. I know it's market-driven to be determined on this timeline here, but this leads me to believe that it's the 2020s before that commercial phase comes in, and I'd like to see, I mean, I said, well, market-driven, but I'd like to see that sooner rather than later. But those are, those are the concerns that I have that I wanted to express tonight on this project. Those are the two specific ones. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Whitelock.
A couple of things. I really believe that what we need along Mountain View, because it's our future freeway, is commercial. And this gives me a lot, again, housing, that troubles me. I think we're missing an opportunity. We missed it with Bangor now, where now we're approving a lot of residential along a future freeway. The other thing I question is, I get that commercial is market-driven, but I worry that, that then in the future we'll come back and say, oh, nobody wants to be there, so give us more houses. That's a concern. Also, I wonder what the landscaping in all the open space, especially when you have the greater-than-thirty grade, is that just going to be native plants that turn into be weed beds, or are they actually going to be planted beds? Do you know?
There's, yeah, there's, let's see, I think in, I don't remember where it is anymore. But it was, it was the plan that showed the types, the different types of active space and passive space. It was the slide, um, just, I didn't find it again, it's not that direction. It's below the houses. There it is. So the area that's in blue would be just for active space, so a lot of that would be developed. I think most of the areas, like the amphitheaters, the top lots, the community gardens, and are all considered active open space. And in some of these areas, as I mentioned, there's, there's slopes, it's a wash, and so I would guess most of that would be just, would be in open, just passive open space, native vegetation.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions from council, this time I will open up the public hearing. If there's anyone present who would like to address the council on this issue, please come to the microphone. You'll have three minutes, and give us your contact information, please.
Steve Jones, thirty-two, thirty-four, west, sixty-nine, twenty, south. The only thing that, when I see these big presentations, and I know that, you probably know that I'm a proponent of our, our services that our city provides, and when I see a large community like this going in, it would really be nice to be able to see on there what the impact is to our fire and our police. Because I sit down and do calculations, and there's, there's thousands of residents that are going to be there, but there's no plan that I see on here that says, as we go through some of the, the charts and timelines, is where's our budget coming to, to increase our fire? That directly affects me, because now all of a sudden they're spending their time over here in these high-density homes and these high-density housings, and they're a long ways from me when I need them. So I'm looking at this kind of self-centered, and I think it'd really be nice in these presentations, if there'd be some kind of timeline for these, you know, for, especially our fire and rescue and ambulance service and things like that, just included on there to say when we should have more officers and more, you know, equipment to handle these kind of densities and, and, because I can see very limited access in there. And I think, first thing I think about is, is do we have the, you know, the apparatuses and stuff to be able to serve with those things? And, and those are all costs to me as a citizen, so, you know, I would expect that, that we would add those to our, to our presentations. Thank you.
My name is Brian Bayless, and I live up in Davis County. I represent the developer. I've met many of you, so it's a, it's a great opportunity for me to stand in front of you. I appreciate the time. I just wanted to go over maybe a couple of items to give, perhaps just a little bit more perspective on some of the questions that you've asked are great questions. The commercial questions are very important. They're very important to us as the developer, and they're very important to you as the city. Some of the traffic questions, we spent a lot of time kind of tackling some of those things. And I wanted to share a little bit about who we are, because I think it's important for you as a city to understand who we are and what we do. So just quickly, I know I've got a limited amount of time, and I've written, written my remarks down so that I can be succinct and get right to the point, but I also realize that some of the residents here might not have the background that some of you do, and I've had the chance to obviously review this nice one-hundred-and-fifty-page application that we, that we submitted to you. So who, who are we? CW Land Co. is the name of our company, we're a professional development company. We've developed hundreds of acres up and down the Wasatch Front. We have, we, the owner is Colin Wright. He was the former owner of Henry Walker Homes and Jack Fisher Homes, and at one time grew the company to a top-five builder in Utah, and has been a close friend of the Jensen family, who's, who's, who owns this property and is here tonight. It's also important for you to understand who our design team is. They have a big impact on the overall look and feel of the community. Our design team is, is a combination of, of engineering, Hurox engineers, who's just a fantastic engineering group pure locally, and they do a lot of major projects like this. Urban Design Associates is a group out of Philadelphia, and they helped with a lot of the design that happened at Daybreak. We brought them in initially to kind of run the design charrette. And then since they've gone, we've got a local group here called Somus. They're also an engineering firm, but architecture and design as well, and planning, and they've helped us with a lot of the kind of details here, lo, excuse me, locally. They're here tonight, they're, they've left their families, so if you guys have tough questions for me that I can't answer, hopefully they'll, they'll stand up and, and save me. Our community speaks for themselves, I just wanted to give you a quick example down in southern Utah. If any of you have driven down north of St. George, one-hundred-and-ninety-three acres, Brio, it's a fourteen, there's a, there's the heart of the community, very similar to this one, it's one-hundred-and-ninety-three acres. The heart of that community is a, is a fantastic amenity center that's got pools and clubhouses and, and very similar to this type of development. So hopefully that, if that's, if, if any of you are interested in a tour down there, I can, I know some people, so I could definitely arrange that and help that out. It's, it's rare along the Wasatch Front, as you probably all know, and even more rare in Salt Lake City, to have the opportunity to shape the city through development on two-hundred acres of contiguous property owned by a small group of cooperating landowners. The times in which those things all align is very, very rare. And I commend the city for taking the time to consider the impacts this community will have on the surrounding area, but also the incredible opportunity that you have to kind of cohesively plan the development. A lot of times, as, as properties develop in Utah, it's kind of this patchwork, and there's not a lot of consistency or continuity between the development types. And so this is an incredible opportunity for us to get this right. And this two-hundred-and-four acres located in the, in the northwest region of West Jordan, is, it's, it's immediately, immediately south of it is obviously, as you know, that, that direct connection to the Mountain View corridor, which is incredibly critical to the future commercial economic viability of, of the city. It's a tremendous opportunity the cities, the cities don't want to pass up. The property has been owned by the Jensen family for five generations. The Jensen brothers that grew up farming this property, Richard and Craig are both here with their families tonight. And without their patience and willingness to hold this property together, we would not have the opportunity to cohesively plan it and evolve into the community that we've envisioned. The parcel, if you haven't driven by it, you've probably driven by it a hundred, a hundred times and maybe not realized, but it's, it's a great piece. It's got a, a little drainage ditch that runs right down through the middle called Dry Wash, and it's got great views, bluffs. We've tried to take advantage of all of those things and be sensitive to those opportunities as we've planned this community. It's got great regional connectivity, the city's definitely been forward-looking as they've looked to the future. We've got pedestrian connectivity with the, with the trails we've talked about as well as the roads. And as we considered the existing features of the site, we anticipated this as an important location for, as Commissioner Whitelock pointed out, where intensity of development seemed to make sense. There, there's a lot of, there's a lot of common sense here. You've, you've got three major streets that border the property on the west, north, and south. On the fourth side sits an elementary school, a Smiths, property owned by the school district that is large enough to, to, to potentially cite a junior high, and nothing's been set, the bonding is still kind of out there. But there's a lot of opportunity here to provide connectivity to, to the community, as well as close proximity to the Mountain View corridor, which improves access to employment centers, thus easing the typical east-west traffic, which is a big deal here in West Jordan. And just a quick word of process, it's important to understand kind of where we've come from and why we're here. We, we started this process in August two thousand fifteen, nearly two and a half years ago, over two and a half years ago. We organized a design workshop or charrette as a week-long process to kind of present the facts, and to sit down and have the discussion on what's important to the community. And so, do I need to end? Do I need to wrap it up?
Well, if you could wrap it up, then that would be, that would be great.
I wanted to address some of the questions. The commercial question is probably the most important. We originally on our plan, we had eleven acres of commercial property that fronted the Seventy-Eighth South. The depths of that commercial property is very important to commercial developers. So we just assumed that it was about a thousand feet deep, which is the same depth as the commercial brochure, Smiths, right next door. And that's a very important depth for commercial development. And so what we did, as we got feedback from the, the council in the last round of council approval, this was, you know, six, eight months ago, we went back and said, does this make sense to increase the commercial? And we had a lot of hesitation and resistance to increase that commercial, just because there are examples all over the Wasatch Front where cities say, you've got to have this to be commercial, and it sits there vacant for a long, long time. So we reached out to commercial brokers, we reached out to commercial experts, we reached out to a lot of folks to give us some good feedback on how to do that. And we also reached out to the commercial industry, the commercial groups that we, that we knew, and we felt like increasing that from the ten acres, eleven acres that we had, to what's shown there on the thirty-eight acres was justifiable. To do any more of that would be difficult, and a lot of that is based on the topo of the site. You can see that green space that's right there is a drainage. And so, and so in order to get the access and the visibility that commercial users want, it was difficult to push to the other side of that drainage. And then as you move further north, that depth becomes further and further, and it's just difficult from a transportation network issue to solve those problems. And so Commissioner Anderson, one of your questions was, you know, when, when is this, or somebody asked, when was the signal, when will the signal be triggered? The residential development here won't signal that trigger, won't trigger, trigger the signal. What triggers the signal, as we've looked at it and done two traffic studies and spent a lot of time kind of digging into this, is it's when that commercial area starts to develop. Because as you guys know, that commercial just churns traffic through there. And so that's a big part of what justifies that signal. So it's going to be based on timing. And I would love nothing more than to develop this into commercial development tomorrow. We've done everything that we possibly can as a developer to put our best foot forward. We've created those concept plans. Our broker, the best in the state, Coldwell Banker Commercial, will be going to ICSC recon later this, this month in Las Vegas. I think some of the folks from West Jordan will be there as well. That's kind of where the commercial magic happens. And so they're going to be there, they're going to be marketing it hard. We've done everything we can to make that as appealing as we possibly could with visibility, access, providing pedestrian connectivity, all the trails kind of go, all trails lead to the end of the rainbow is that commercial development, as well as the schools and the, and the, and the church. So we've tried to make that as viable as we possibly could, and unfortunately, despite all of that, we just can't force that. And so the timing of that is going to be totally market-dependent. But what I, what I can assure, what I assure you of is, we are, we are doing our very best and putting our best foot forward to make that a reality. And I will end it with that. I've got some other things, but, let me see, there, I thought there was one more question that somebody asked that I was hoping, hoping I could answer. Drive signal and the multifamily. Oh, Commissioner Anderson, your question on the multifamily to the north. There's one reason for that, and one reason only. It's because across the street, there's already multifamily there. And so for consistency and scale and use and all of that, we felt like that was a good, a good use, that was consistent with what was happening to the north. The traffic, it, it can handle the traffic. To make commercial go up there, and I would love, the more commercial I can put on this plan, the, the more lucrative it is for us, it would die up there. The traffic counts just aren't there, and it would be really hard for us to justify some additional commercial. I think we've put as much commercial here to the city's request as we, as we possibly could. So those are hopefully some helpful remarks, and I appreciate the time.
I'm Joe Michinski, three-zero-five-six, Linton Circle, here in West Jordan. I didn't have plans on coming up here tonight for this. I didn't even know this was going in until tonight, but I'm glad I showed up tonight with my troupe. To go over a couple of things that I, I noticed on this, starting from the, the side of it that I support is actually that commercial phase. We actually travel up the hill to go to Smiths because of that area that's up there, and shop at that Smiths. They have a great community that's up there. It, it's really a great area that's there. So I, I wanted to support the size of the commercial that's there, to help foster that growth that's there. What I'm taking issue with is, I see, I see that there's public spaces, I don't see that there's parks. I don't see that there's anything for, directly outlined, saying, hey, community, get together, come to this public space, and let's do community events. The walking paths, I saw that they were there on the diagram, all that I see is sidewalks. Possibly if developer could point those out to be more clear at some point. Another item of, of quick address is snow removal with the density of the housing. I know in a lot of neighborhoods, people just don't move their cars, and do we have a potential for snow removal issues in this neighborhood, being so packed in like that? To piggyback off of that, the development of what was brought up of the five-foot sideyard. I have a, a benefit of having a nice-sized sideyard, that I can fit something down the side of it. A five-foot sideyard, my neighbor puts up a fence, impossible. It's not going to happen. If I wanted to put a boat in my backyard for storage, if I wanted to, to put a shed where I can move some items back and forth, impossible. So I urge the developer to reconsider- So I urge the developer to reconsider the density and make it more neighborhood-friendly, make it so that this is something that people will want to stay in long-term, not just a starter house, not just something that they can move into. So a couple of items for your consideration and for the developer. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Julia Glade, and I live on 6376 West Traveler Lane in the community right across from 70th South. A correction, we are not apartments. We're actually townhomes and condos, and we've been there for a while. And one thing that I want the council to take in consideration, if you go down 70th South, the road narrows and people are already parking on the street, and so it becomes like a one-car lane. Also, there's a school, and there's a ton of kids that go to that school and walk down that street, walk down those sidewalks, and you have cars speeding up and down that lane, even when there's pedestrian walking signs. I rarely see cars stop unless there's a crossing guard for the elementary school. And the other thing, it's just a high traffic, so please, if you are considering going this direction, please wind the road on 70th South for the safety of the community, and we need, we need more space. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address this issue?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Paul Stringham. I work with Peterson Development in the neighboring property of the East. And I appreciate, I'm just here voicing my personal opinion, and we as a development company, and how we feel about what is going on in the area, we feel like this is a great, this is a great city, a great community that we're all developing in. I've personally been involved in our projects there at Peterson with bringing Smiths in and all of our other commercial developments on all four corners there for the last eight, nine years or so. And it's taken a considerable amount of effort and time for Smiths to come in here into the project, and we're so appreciative of the city and working with infrastructure and so forth, and the collaboration and working together. We'll continue to do that. And regards to this project that we're talking about tonight, we feel as Peterson, and I personally feel, because I focus on all the commercial with Peterson Development up there, so no one knows the commercial better than I do in this area, because I focus on it day by, day every day. All my, all my efforts are in this section here, 5600 West and 7800 South. Commercial, and I don't need to speak too much of it, but it's changed so much. E-commerce and all this going on and the commercial activity and big boxes and so forth, it's a real challenge, and you've got to be so careful about what you construct. You want to build things once, not twice, you don't want to take it down. Big boxes challenging. There's very few big boxes out there. They've got 38 acres of commercial right there. That's a lot of commercial, and as Brian Bayless said there, you've got a lot of depth there. That's a challenge. Visibility and access are critical to the success of commercial. And if you don't have great access there from the Mountain View Corridor, it's tough. I know and I'm confident they'll be successful there, but it's going to take a long, long time for that commercial to develop and to materialize with occupancy. So they've got to be, and they will be, very careful, and I'm confident the city will work with them as well. Every conference we go to nationally, in home building and commercial, and I too go to Las Vegas for these conventions and so forth, Utah is on the map. That's what's so interesting. It never was, it's always been on the map to some degree, but nobody really talked about it. But now, everywhere you go, you talk about Utah. When you read about the articles that are out there, the affordability problem of housing, and our younger people, our millennials, that cannot afford to even stay in the city that they grew up in, they're going, they're leaving. There's a shortage of housing here. And so I think we all need to work together as developers and the city and communities to work together to find out where is the solution? And I think some of the solution is going to be higher density, because ground is just not affordable. It's difficult. We're limited with the amounts to the east and to the west. It's a linear market. We grow north and south. We're not a Las Vegas or a Phoenix where everything is sprawled. We don't have that kind of space, and so we need to be careful and selective. I know who this developer is, and I've seen their projects in St. George. They're a very qualified developer, and the appeal and the draw, and when I say the appeal, the curb appeal of their developments and the articulation of their architectural and structures, I think are really quite nice. So we support this project, and we as a neighboring developer, Peterson, we will work with them and collaborate with them. There will be some challenges and differences, and I'm confident we'll make this a successful project and a nice community in this area. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak to this? Seeing then, I will close the public hearing and open it up for council's motion. Interesting. Councilmember Anderson?
Not ready to make a motion yet, but I guess I have just a couple of questions related to police and fire that Mr. Jones brought up. Does this create an issue with police and fire and response times? Personnel-wise or station-wise?
As you're aware, we do have a station right off 78th and 6400 West. Small station, five-handed. Depends on what goes in there, if an aerial will be needed, if it's two, three stories, aerial's quite a ways away. So a ladder, aerial ladder.
Right.
So there could be possibilities, yeah, where we might want to consider that, another station in that area.
And the station on 64th has, it's not, what do you, I don't know, highly utilized or it's got peak periods, but it's got some downtime where it can absorb some of the demand. I mean, obviously depending on time, but...
Right, right now, currently, but if you're aware of the Ocker Shadow Station, the UFA Station that closed down, they're getting a lot more busier. They're their busiest station out of four, so their call volumes going up yearly, so it's a concern, it's something to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure, concerns us, obviously with population increase, crime increases as well, and typically with high density, obviously that even increases a little bit more as well. So yeah, that does concern us as well.
Okay, thank you. And then just a couple more things, that distance between the road of the commercial phase and 7800 South, the distance between, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but does anyone have that, that distance, just for my benefit, 300 feet?
What distance are you measuring, this gap from here to here?
That's correct. City block?
Don't. 750 feet is what the applicant is indicating. And I know our traffic engineer has worked with them very closely to, it's moved as far east as they could possibly move it on their property.
Okay, and the traffic studies with Horix or Somus, do they, I mean, it's how many units again? Like 700? How many units? How many? 753, and it's what, two-point something cars typically? Is that kind of how it's designed? So 1,500 vehicles roughly? Is that, is that reasonable? Okay. And, you know, the other thing that ties into this, and this is more of a comment, is when we, when we reduce the sideyards and people have boats and RVs and multiple cars, it creates a need for storage places, and we have those as well. So I mean, it's, it's, it's a big thing. It's a macro decision. So anyway, that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll hold my question for Mr. Murphy for a minute, since he's a little ways away from the microphone, and start off with a question for Mr. Langford. When we talk about concerns about police and fire, I assume that's with current staffing and current, or what we currently have today. But I know that as new development happens, we're allowed to collect impact fees that help offset the impact that new development's going to have on the existing system, so that for any increase or any additional utilization that's going to come, that's not necessarily subsidized by the folks who came in early, paid ahead, and now somebody's coming in later getting a free ride, they're going to be paying their share as well. Do we know what the impact fees would be for police and fire, or have a rough estimate?
Not off the top of my head, no. If you give me a moment, maybe I can calculate something.
Okay, I'll give you a moment or two and jump over with one of my other questions, but I guess my understanding is, right now, the impact fee structure that's been approved is something that's been mathematically shown by outside groups to, I can't remember the proper terminology, but it's supposed to be sufficient to cover the reasonable additional expenses incurred by, by growth. So although there may be concern for public safety today, I would expect the impact fees would be able to help offset that. For Mr. Murphy, the question I had is about 70th South, and similarly with the impact fees, are there impact fees that would be collected for roads that could be used on 70th, or even outside of the impact fee question? Do we have plans to expand 70th as was brought up earlier?
Your twofold question, two answers here. The street itself is on your transportation master plan, it is a collector's street in that location. So it's basically a 70-foot road, three lanes, bike lanes, center turn lane, type of a collector's street when it fully expands. That road, again, is slated to go over the top of Mountain View Corridor and tie into U-111. In order to get there, we have to get over the top. It's probably a $25, $30 million project, and it is supposed to be funded by UDOT, not the city. So that, if that's helpful. So that doesn't come into your impact fee calculations for the bridge, but it will for the road itself. In order to charge for the impact fees to a certain project, it has to be not only on your transportation master plan, which it is, but it also has to be within your six-year horizon in your window, so you can charge for it. So that's what Tishler Buys helps us do every couple of years. We include those new projects and those priority projects up into the strategic plan, and then you adjust your impact fees every couple of years to stay current with the level of projects that you're trying to fund.
Question with, oh, mics are odd. So the second part of my question about impact fees on 70th South is, I appreciate the response, but somewhat irrelevant is it's a UDOT road. Is kind of what I was getting, or just the bridge is UDOT?
Just the bridge is UDOT, the rest is the city street. So we will be charging impact fees for the city street portion for that element that is not already going to be put in by development.
Okay.
And it's a 70-foot street, so it doesn't have a very high impact fee.
So you say 70-foot is what it's designed to be? Is it at 70-foot today?
Well, the portions down below are, yes. It probably was, the lower portions down towards 56 was probably built at an 80-foot right-of-way, and it's narrowed up down our, excuse me, west by the school, probably back to a 70 at that point.
Okay, so it's safe to say the master plan does show a widening happening west of Falcon Ridge on 70th South?
Yes, it does.
Beautiful. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. The other question I had was about the green space that we see out here and the comment about parks. My question is, who's paying for that green space? I assume that there's an HOA that's going to be covering that green space and the maintenance thereof? Sorry, that's not fair to ask four questions of you at the same time.
No, that is correct.
Okay. And then I also, if I recall right, with the PC zoning, one of the requirements in the PC zone is that the open space that's out there is, like the trails and the parks is available for the public in general. They're allowed to have some amenities like a pool that can be restricted to the residents, but the trails and the open space is required by our PC zoning to be open to the community as a whole. Is that understanding accurate?
Yes.
Thank you. And I know this isn't a, the, the impact fee question wasn't a fair one for you. I would assume that our CFO would normally take that. We have our budget officer here, but not Mr. Piper, so is there a rough ballpark you've been able to?
Well, I haven't done the numbers itself, but just to give you and the public an idea, impact fees for single-family homes, every single-family home would pay $3,200 towards parks, $33 for fire, 192 for police, and 2,300, just over 2,300 for roads, to help maintenance of that. So that's single-family, there is a component of multifamily, you've got commercial, so it's hard to nail down a number, but hopefully that paints a little bit of a picture.
It does. So you said 3,200 for parks?
Correct.
And then $33 for fire?
For fire.
192 for police?
Right.
And 2,300 per single-family house for roads?
Yeah, $2,333 for roads, to be exact.
Chance you have water, stormwater, sewer right there in front of you as well? Kind of the lesser seen utilities that often get forgotten about, but man, when you miss stormwater...
Yeah, water is 2,245, sewer 1,973.
Sorry, that was, you said that was sewer or stormwater?
Sewer, and storm is 7,165.
Okay, so again, 3,200 plus 33 plus 192 plus 2,300 plus, so 1973 plus 7,165. So it works out to just over $17,000 per single-family house, or per single-family residence that's paid into the community to help support the infrastructure that's there. So overall, given, you said it was 753 total units, not counting the commercial element of it. I'm, it's been a while since we've gone through those impact fee numbers with Tishler Buys and they came and presented the study, and we adopted what was provided, but personally, I'm feeling comfortable knowing that we have those impact fees to help cover. So I, was there another comment before I wrap up?
Sorry, as I'm going through, and I apologize I'm doing this on the fly, but the storm, you should take that. It's 7,165 per acre of single-family, that's not per unit. So some of it is per unit, some of it is based on acreage, there's a lot of components, so...
So 7,165, we're averaging just about five units per acre, so that's still about $1,400 per single...
Right, that's a more accurate number if you're...
Plus 9,943, so it works out to just north of $11,000 per single-family resident.
Probably a little bit more, but...
Okay, I've had enough fun with the numbers. Thank you for answering that. And like I said, I do feel comfortable with what's been proposed and knowing that we do have funding to help cover some of the additional impact that we're going to have on the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 18-14.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Jacob?
Just by way of explanation, I'm about 95% of the way to a yes on this, but the multifamily up on 70th South has really given me pause. It did also when we did the rezone on this and the future land use map on this. So that's still giving me pause, the connectivity's still giving me pause, so I'm not 100% sold on this one yet.
Okay, no more comments. We have a motion on the table, and so we'll take a vote. Roll call.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey? Councilmember Jacob? No? Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Reiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes five to two in favor.
I've been asked, we have a motion for a five-minute break.
Move for a five-minute break.
Move for, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We will take a five-minute break to 8:20. Okay, we're going to move to public hearing, item 8D, receive public input and consider for approval ordinance 18-15, amending the 2009 West Jordan Municipal Code Title 13, zoning regulations regarding allowing vehicle and equipment repair limited as a condition used in the SC-2 Community Shopping Center Zone citywide. Applicability, City of West Jordan applicant, Scott Langford.
Thanks, Mayor. We have Ray McCann to talk about this specific, so this text amendment, so, Ray?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Not too long ago, as you recall, we, the city council, approved vehicle, equipment, and repair limited in our PC or planning community zoning districts. And Peterson Development has now got another tire store that would like to locate west of the Smiths on 5600 West, has requested that, that that also be extended, that vehicle, equipment, repair limited be extended into the SC2 zoning districts. That's really what this request is about. Our SC2 districts are kind of located on our major arterial streets. There's one across the street from this building, by the McDonald's, that's an SC2 zone. They're kind of scattered throughout the city, but again, they're located on the arterial streets, and they're kind of geared towards community or types of businesses. In this case, we took this to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission really didn't have any issues with it, they thought that it was a good fit for the SC2 zones, but they also wanted to make sure that it was part, could be handled through the conditional use process, so that we could handle any, mitigate any issues such as noise or building orientation, things like that. Again, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the text amendment as staff, and so that's our recommendation. It's basically, we'll just fit into the use chart as shown down there. So a pretty straightforward request, again, the question of the week is whether or not you feel comfortable with allowing this type of use in our SC2 districts.
Okay, question from councilmembers, Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. So currently, not allowed at all in SC2, correct?
Correct.
Now, when you mentioned the property across the street from where we're at right now, you mean just to the north by the...
By the, where the McDonald's is.
Kind of by the Goodyear? So is that not SC2?
I can't remember off the top of my head.
I'm just kind of going to that one as a visual, because if that's what would be allowed conditionally, it seems like something that's, if not already within, it seems adjacent to, so that's kind of what I'm picturing. While Mr. Langford's looking at that, the other question I had was, with that conditional use permit, the process for that, fully...
Oh, it's just through the Planning Commission?
So they stop a public hearing, take public comment, and if they deem appropriate, then it can be permitted, just doesn't necessarily get automatic approval administratively, it still goes through the process, I guess?
Right.
Awesome. So that is SC2 across the street? So we already have one in an SC2?
Yeah, and that's kind of the nature of the code, right? It ebbs and flows, that pendulum swings back and forth, and yeah, there's probably more that we could list that our grandfathered in.
Okay, I have a number of comments, but I will hold off on those comments until after the public hearing and just stick with questions for now, so, thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, is there a map that shows this location? I kind of have a feeling where it's at, but it seems like it's right next to that roundabout there by Smiths, and I'm just a little worried about traffic again, just like we talked about with this previous development that we just passed. Just kind of trying to figure out, I don't know if you have a Google Maps you can pull up and kind of point out where that's at. Look at that, Whole World.
There it is, you see it?
There it is. I'm just, I'm guessing it's the one right next to the roundabout, is that correct?
It's right where the hat is.
Okay. So as far as entrance and exit there, I mean, I'm not sure if that's going to stay at roundabout forever, there's talks that in future traffic that'll be changed. So will the exit and entrance be just off of this Smiths? I'm just trying to get an idea of traffic flow if this is approved.
Do you have a... We don't have the...
We have, yeah, we've got a concept drawing, but what that is, it was off of the access to that was just a joint access off of that, what they call the ring road that goes around Smiths, so not a direct access onto Seventy-Eight.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you. So, the Home Depot there on Seventy-Eight Hundred, what area is that zoned? Because it has residents directly behind it, as I recall.
Yeah, SC2.
Have we had complaints from those residents?
Brock? No, not that I can recall. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions from council, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone present that would like to address counsel on this issue, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, comments, and come back to council. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll hold my other comments and just make a motion to approve ordinance 18-15.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion to the motion. Did you want to have a discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Public hearing, item 8E, receive public input and consider for approval ordinance 18-16 regarding a general plan land use map amendment for 1.15 acres of property from light industrial to public facilities designation and rezon, 12.56 acres from A-20 agricultural 20-acre lots minimum zone to PF Public Facilities Zone for Zone 4 New Bingham Highway, 4 million-gallon reservoir located at 6,700 West New Bingham Highway, City of West Jordan applicant, Scott Langford.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Kent Page here, another senior planner, to present this proposal to you. This is part of a capital improvement project, one of several that the council likely see in the near future, so, Kent?
Thank you. The Public Works Department has identified the need for additional culinary water storage and also for future stormwater detention. So we currently, the city currently has a existing 3 million-gallon water tank right in this location, and they're proposing to build a 4 million-gallon water tank just to the west. In the process, they'll be improving the site with some landscaping, changing the access from currently about right here to an access road right here. They're planning to have a wrought iron fence in the front and have a sidewalk extension to the Echo Ridge subdivision here to the east. And interestingly enough, the general land use map calls for about 1.15 acres of this property to be light industrial, so that would just need to be changed from light industrial to public facilities. And then, about 12 and a half acres needs to be rezoned from A-20 to public facilities. And then, large public facilities is a conditional use in any zone. So we've gone before the Planning Commission just last week, and they granted approval, a conditional use permit for this facility, subject to the city council's approval of this rezon application and the change to the general land use map. This area to the east between the Echo Ridge subdivision and the existing water tank has been identified as a future detention basin, so there's the existing channel that's approximately in this location that's been draining into the Echo Ridge subdivision approximately in this location. The proposal is to redirect that channel to the north into a future detention basin that will be grassed and hopefully can be used also for Doleport Christopher Park. So the city has recently purchased three or four different properties around this existing reservoir for, to enhance this culinary reservoir and to provide drainage, a drainage lot and possibly a park in this area. Here's a picture of the existing reservoir, the city is planning to repaint this existing reservoir and spruce it up with some landscaping, like they've done in these other well sites that the city has, well, site number two and well site number three. And the future land use map calls for this area to be public facilities except for just this 1.15 acres approximately that's called for light industrial. So the request is to change this 1.15 acres to public facilities and then to rezon all the necessary acreage from A-20 to public facilities. If you have any further questions, I'll try to address those at this time, and hopefully that makes sense what we're trying to do, it's kind of a mouthful.
Okay, thank you. Questions from councilmembers, we'll start with Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Not necessarily as, I know this is a zoning or rezon and future land use map issue, my question's more about the project itself. If we know roughly what the dollar amount is going to be associated with that when it comes time, and then also how much of that would be covered by impact fees. Again, obviously, that's not a land use, but it's directly related to what we're doing, so I'm curious.
We bid the project yesterday, 5.5 million is the price tag, it's all covered by impact fees and a current water bond that you already have out right now. It's part of the first $10 million and part of a sequence of building four different reservoirs in the next two years, and if I sound tired, it's because it's a lot of work. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, appreciate that.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. Not necessarily a land use question either, but can you go back to the landscape slide? Right there. So, I just want to applaud that we're not having grass and not using water on the well two site landscaping and the well three pump station, and I hope we can do stuff like that on city property outside of parks in the future. So, but you're saying this Zone 4 reservoir will have landscaping similar to this with some trees and some nice decorative rock that doesn't need mowing and water?
Correct. And most of the landscaping will be the front easter close to the New Bingham Highway. And there'll be a nice vinyl fence, vinyl-covered chain link fence around the property except for the iron right in the front. except for the iron right in the front.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I see no more questions from council members, so I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to address this issue, please come forward. And seeing that, I will close the public hearing and come back to city council. Councilmember McConaughey.
I've approved ordinance 18-16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Probably a question for Mr. Naylor. Never mind, it's not a, I'll talk to him later. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
I went past that today, and I think this is a good location for that. I can see this is gonna fit very well, so I will be in favor of this when it comes time to vote. Are those junipers or spruces?
We'd like you to talk into the microphone when you're doing that, if you could.
Sorry, I'll get used to this. So in the bottom slide, most of them are spruces, but there is a combination of junipers and spruces through both those pictures. So you're both right in the answer.
Hey, Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a question that I was a little bit embarrassed to ask. Councilmember Burton and I had a wager as to whether or not Mr. Naylor would know, and we both listened he would, so proved us right. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
That means I lost, I have to buy him dinner. But it also means that I knew there were spruces because he said we're gonna spruce that up. And then I thought maybe they're junipers because it happened in June.
Okay, let's vote.
Mayor Writing.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
We will now move to our business items. Business item 9A, discussion and possible action regarding resolution 18-89, confirming the appointment of Brock Hudson as the Community Preservation Director for the City of West Jordan. David Bricky.
Thank you, Mayor. City council, I appreciate you taking consideration for us to continue moving forward towards that ultimate change in 2020. I believe having a preservation manager for the city to assist residents in maintaining a quality of city that includes a gruddy free de, get free de free? I can't even say it. Walls free of gaffredi. I can't even say that either. Please approve. Brock Hudson, thank you.
Other questions from council? Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. No question, rather, I move to approve resolution 18-89.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Mayor Writing.
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
I have been asked to move item 9C up as a personal privilege for Councilmember McConaughey. So we'll go to 9C, discussion and possible action regarding the Brenda Thomas stormwater claim and Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Little bit of background about this stormwater claim. A few years ago, when we were experiencing significant flooding over by Constitution Park, that neighborhood just to the north saw a number of homes that had some damage. This home was among the worst damaged as far as property, both the building and other things, such as the vehicle that was there due to the downward sloping driveways and the amount of stormwater that had been redirected from throughout this portion of the valley. I'm trying to be careful what I say because I know there's a legal process associated with this, and I don't wanna say anything contrary to that. But I'll leave it what they experienced from stormwater issues. And it was because of what the council at the time saw that we decided that a program was necessary to help mitigate some of the issues that had been seen by the stormwater damage. This house was the primary impetus behind that. The homeowner waited patiently while we put together modifications to code that would allow us to help remediate some of the issues that occurred with the stormwater. And then because of other issues that were out there, they were not able to submit a claim in a timely fashion. We have had other instances where a claim has been brought to the city and has not been approved strictly because of the timing issue. And as a council, we have given direction to staff to go back and reevaluate the claim without consideration for the claim submission timeline. That's what's being requested here. Not requesting that we go over and automatically approve anything, similar to where in the judicial system, if an appellate court hears something, they may say, I wanna remand it back to the body that originally heard it with this additional piece of instruction. So what's being requested here is that we send us back basically to staff to reevaluate the claim, but without disqualifying it due to the requirement to submit within one year of when the damage occurred. To add a little bit more to why they did not submit within the one year, one of the things that they decided is they just did not wanna risk the flooding happening again. So efforts were under made to remove the downward sloping driveway, put in additional landscaping, and basically wall off the garage and turn it into a livable residence. At the time that we originally, the council originally passed this, it could be interpreted that all of the work had to be done prior to the claim being submitted. That's a substantial expense to go through, so it wasn't feasible for the resident to do that within the year. So now that we've had clarifications to our code at our last city council meeting, the claimant has already submitted and gone through the process. It's been denied because of timeline was what was cited. So now, as the appeal body, I'm asking the city council to remit this back to staff to reconsider without holding them to that timeline submission requirement. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Jacob.
Just one quick question for clarification. The letter that is in the packet from Jared Smith says they can appeal to the city council. We're not hearing that appeal tonight, right? We are, you're just asking to send it back to staff, not? And if the staff denied it again with the appeal, could they then appeal it to this body to hear the evidence and vote one way or the other? I just, question on the process.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Jacob. Based on our current code, we could tonight just say pay the claim. And I, that's not necessarily a precedent that I want to set. I would prefer that we let staff do what they've been asked to do as they evaluate, and I prefer that any overrides be very restrictive and very concise and surgical in their usage. So rather than saying, although we could say just pay the claim, I would prefer that as a council, we say reconsider, but remove that timeline. So yes, we could, but that's not necessarily what I'm asking. Though if somebody wanted to make a motion along those lines, it would be doable. Does that answer the question?
Councilmember Jacob.
Mostly, just the last part is if staff hears it again and denies it again, would that same sentence be in there and they could then come and appeal it? And we would hear the evidence and then rule at that point.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I would look to our city attorney, but I would think so because if we're not necessarily granting, we're not necessarily granting the appeal, we're not necessarily denying the appeal, we're saying reconsider with some additional instruction along with that. So if with the additional instruction, we're still denied, I would assume there would still be the possibility for another appeal. But I would look to our former city attorney for confirmation.
It's a unique question you're posing because if you note the date of the letter, March 23rd, even their appeal time for them to file their appeal before the council has now passed. That's been the whole issue. The four individuals who sat in review of this request, it's unique that this city council has decided to waive its immunity from lawsuits. Having done that, I'm pressed for the responsibility of those individuals who were reviewing it to follow the rules that you as a city council put in place. So it's not our place, as pursuant to the city code, to deviate from that. It would have been a violation of our obligations to do so. So I'm hearing Council McConaughey say waive the time period and allow them to reconsider the decision without consideration of the appeal. So it's, in essence, a resurrecting of the claim itself. And we'll be going back and re-reviewing this initial claim without consideration, as I understand it, of the time issue, which would then, if denied again, would seem to resurrect the claim and ability to appeal once again to the council.
Let me ask you a question, and if we were to waive that timeframe on this one, would it have set a precedent that every other claim going forward could be, timeframe could be waived?
I don't wanna say it. Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna, some clarification. Is this claim grandfathered in? Because we just changed it last, we changed the stormwater code last meeting. So is this, is this under the old code where we had old code where we had like five calendar days and 10 business days? We had some discrepancy in the, in the time of appeal?
I'll look at my calendar and see if I can calculate that very quickly.
While you're looking that up, there was a question I had as we developed the new one, that there was one appeal that had to go to the city clerk, five calendar days, which includes weekends when no one's here to receive it, versus, I think, 10 or eight business days when we are open. So is this appeal? I guess my question is, is this appeal under the old former stormwater rules?
Answer to that is this letter reflected of March 23rd was under the old stat, code. And their appeal period would have, at bare minimum, would have expired April 6th, and you re-reviewed the code on April 24th. So under a theory that, yes, they would have expired. And they could have appealed, but they chose not to for whatever reason.
But now they've chosen to appeal.
Well, it's my understanding that Councilman McConaughey asked for this matter to come forward, not the Thomases.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. You had asked about setting a precedent. I want to point out, there's probably others that I'm not aware of, but I do know for a fact that there was a Mr. Wyatt who had a claim of a similar matter, and I believe that one we ended up bringing back too. It's been probably three, four years. But I believe we have already done this previously. Thank you.
We have silence. Councilmember Anderson.
So I'll move that we, I might need help with this. Let's see, discussion possible. I move that we direct staff to rehear the appeal, eliminating the timeline. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Councilmember Lamb.
I'll second that for discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion. There is no discussion to the motion. So let's vote on that motion. Roll call.
Roll call. Okay. Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
No.
Councilmember Jacob.
No.
Mayor Writing.
No.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Vote passes four to three in favor.
Okay, business item. I think we're going to excuse Councilmember McConaughey, who has an emergency at home. This is item 9B, discussion and possible action regarding resolution 18-90, adopting the tentative budgets for general funds, special revenue funds, capital projects funds, enterprise funds, and internal service funds for fiscal year 2018-19, and setting June 13, 2018 as the budget public hearing. David Bricky.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is procedurally a process we have to follow pursuant to state code. But in discussing matters of the budget with council members as we've tried to go through this new process we've rolled out, I think it's been brought to my attention that what you're seeing and what the subcommittees will be considering is gonna be challenging as to how to define what your role and expectation is. So I, I think in the next couple of weeks, as we move forward into the next round of subcommittees, I am going to try to elicit from each of you what it is that you hope to accomplish as those last subcommittees are concluded. But I would ask, as this is only an initial draft, as required by law, that we do ask you to approve it so we can continue the process moving forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Whitelock.
So on the 13th is when it will come for us for final approval? Yes? So when will the public be able to see it and weigh in on it before that date?
I'm gonna have to turn to Eric and ask for his assistance and insight on that matter.
Excuse me. So the formal public hearing is also scheduled for the 13th. The budget is now available. It's been on the website ever since the day after the 23rd or 24th that we presented it to you. And that's essentially is how it's available.
Yeah, I have issues with that. I think that we should make sure the public knows it's available now. And then they need to be able to weigh in before you ask me to vote because otherwise, how can they tell me what they think? How can I vote for them if they're just coming that night? They don't have, I don't think, I don't think that's good governance. I think that we need to allow them to have time to weigh in on what's really going to be approved because right now, what's there is a tentative budget, and on the 13th, it will be the final budget, correct?
We'll be voting to make it the final budget, to adopt it.
Will there be changes between now and then?
Likely only as directed by the city manager, the staff, and/or the council.
I'd really like to see us hold the public hearing the week before you ask us to vote.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question. This is probably answered, but the 13th is the last possible date that we can approve this, or?
For a second.
The 22nd, which is nine days later, which is a Friday then? But it's the last, currently scheduled council meeting that we can approve it on. I also would like to see more opportunity for public input and more opportunity for, just for the council to review and to make changes and corrections and things. That said, this is the first, this is my least favorite part of the budget process, is adopting this fallback budget and saying, this is our budget. And if we don't come up with something better, this is. with something better, this is, this is what we're stuck with. This is my least favorite part of this, because I don't think it's gotten the scrutiny yet. I think it needs more scrutiny before this point. And I made this comment when we were talking about the committees, that we're, we're putting together these subcommittees on the budget to go review and to make changes and to adopt, but that's coming after we already have a fallback position set in stone. So I think, this is my least favorite part of this. That said, I like this one better than any of the other budgets I've seen in the last three years, so. It's, I like the accuracy and the transparency that it is built into the budget that we have before us. So I'm kind of a little bit on the fence, but I don't know that I can vote against the process because I don't think I have much say in the process. You know, these dates are kind of given to us and we kind of have to take them and run with them, and it gives seven people who are not financed people, for the most part, except for Alan. It gives us, let's see, from now to June thirteenth, a month and four days, five weeks, to review a hundred and twenty-some odd million dollars worth of expenditures and revenues and, and a hundred and fifty-eight? That's a lot of money. So that's, that's just, that's just what I'm saying. I think we, we need more time.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. This is kind of what I do for a living, not up here, but budgets, and if it may, if it may help, there's, there's processes dictated by state code. So you have to have a tentative budget, which is what we're doing at our school, and that has to be thirty days, thereabouts, and jump in Eric or David about, about thirty days, well. First meeting in May is when you need to, by law, adopt tentative budget, you can still make changes to it, you can still adjust it, it's been online since April twenty-fifth, when I looked up our meeting schedule. You have to have a public hearing within, I'm trying to remember, it might be different for schools, but about fourteen days, you have to, or thirty days, you have to have a public hearing on the budget, and by state law, it has to be adopted by June twenty-second this year, next year it changes to June thirtieth. Then you have to upload that to the, your budget to the state within thirty days after it's approved. So there's, there's some steps in here, but it's technically not our budget as a legislative body until we approve it as a tentative budget. So all the stuff that we received on April twenty-fourth, and so this is process, I'm trying, trying to help, these processes are kind of dictated by law. So tonight, we're going to adopt the tentative budget, and that means it now comes to us as a legislative body to meet with the public, to have dialogue, and see where we want to make changes. State law dictates, as I mentioned, that June twenty-second is when it has to be approved. Our second meeting in June is the twenty-seventh, which is after the law allows us to approve it. So if we don't approve it on the thirteenth, then we must have a meeting prior to the twenty-second to follow state law. So some of this is governed by, well, most of this is governed by, by state law. So tonight, this step is to take the budget and bring it to this body for dialogue, digestion, add, subtracts, that's what tonight's process is. So I hope, I hope that's helpful. I'm doing this very same process, and next week I will be doing this exact same thing with the school board.
Well, and I, I have a question, I guess, for you two, since you or Eric, one of the two of you, I guess, that probably could answer this best. That if, if we have the tentative budget that's approved tonight, if that then becomes the council's budget to make amends, do we have, as a council, have to have four votes at least to approve a line item change on that budget? Correct? Okay. That answer my question? Correct. Okay, so councilmember Whitelock?
So I don't think there's anything in the law that says we couldn't have the public hearing on this on the twenty-third of May instead of having it on the same night.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. I believe you can have the, the public hearing anytime between now and when you vote to adopt it.
So my preference would be that we have the public hearing on the twenty-third.
But they won't be voting on, they won't be voting on the budget at that night?
All we're doing is getting public input, and they are welcome to watch live or listen in later, right? So, so I would request that we do that, I just think it is a better governance model.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. Being a new council member, I have same concerns as Kayleen does sometimes, because it's still a new process to me, but we did get to sit and watch this last year, and I saw a lot of good things that happened with the current council members that are on there, and I thank them for all that they did. I think I have to remember, you know, as a citizen, for me personally, I don't think I ever followed the city budget, whether or not I was interested or not, or whether I wanted to follow it or not as well. But I just want to remind those of us that are on this council that we have been elected as officials to make this decision, and while we don't have to go out and solicit all of the citizens to get their input, the budget is out there, and I think that they have the opportunity to go see it. I don't know, I can't think of any time in the past ten, twenty years, or even other cities that have said, hey, citizens, go out and go online and look at the city budget. I'm not sure if cities do that, or if that's something we should do, whether we should market that or not, but I do feel strongly, you know, whether it's next week that we have a public hearing or the thirteenth, the citizens do have the opportunity to see what the budgets are, they are out there, and this tentative budget is not the final budget, and then us as an elected officials, we've been, we've been given that privilege by the citizens to make that final budget. So just want to put my two cents out there, and I feel like the process has gone well. It's never going to be perfect, we're never going to have enough money, obviously, we always need more budget, but what I've seen so far with the city, both last year and this year, it's been a great process, and I feel that we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just for point of information for this body, earlier before we started city council meeting, we did the redevelopment agency and the Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District and the Municipal Building Authority, and we, by motion, put the public hearing for those budgets on the thirteenth of June. So, so if we do the city budget on the twenty-third, we will also have redevelopment agency, Fairway Estates, and the Municipal Building Authority public hearing on June thirteenth, which we already passed.
Eric? Did you want to say something else?
Yes. I need to throw the, the second element into this that we haven't discussed, but there have been some brief discussions of the topic at other times. Okay, so by June twenty-second, we need to either adopt a budget, or we need to notify the county of our intent to raise the property tax rate and, and, and do a truth in taxation hearing, which at that point kind of delays the process, moves the process back until it's typically in the middle of August, and the council, I mean, the county will assign us a day that we will have our truth in taxation hearing, and so we'll follow the, the protocol that they give us. But, but making that election delays the, the process before we, before we must legally adopt a budget.
Councilmember Jacob?
Just a quick question on that, thank you for bringing that up. If we notify the county of our intent to raise property taxes, we then have public hearings, we do not, we're not obligated to raise property taxes at that point, correct? We go through truth in taxation, we may vote not to raise property taxes after all that.
That, that's correct. It, it makes no obligation, you can still say, no, we're not going to do.
And that intent has to be declared by June twenty-second, or we have to pass the budget?
Yes.
By June twenty-second, okay, so same deadline, okay. With that said, I was ready to move to approve resolution eighteen dash ninety, adopting the fiscal year twenty eighteen, I'm getting there, adopting the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen tentative budgets for, for the general fund, special revenue funds, the capital project funds, the enterprise funds, and the internal service funds, and scheduling a public hearing on the tentative budgets for June thirteenth twenty eighteen in the city council chamber, and I'd like to direct staff to put on the agenda for the second meeting in May, an additional public hearing. On the budget.
Heard you say second week of May.
Second meeting in May. Second, second meeting, second council meeting. So the next, the next council meeting.
We have a motion? Councilmember Whitelock?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
The vote passes six in favor.
Item ten A remarks, are there further remarks before we adjourn?
Mayor, may I just add for the benefit of at least those who are still present and council members to consider, if you go to the West Jordan homepage, click on that, you go clear to the far right, you'll see a dropdown menu option that says quick links. If you hit that, it will pop up the proposed budget for each of the small subsections that have been set out, and below that, the entire proposed budget to all two-hundred-and-ninety pages. So if you think we need to have more notice on Facebook, or maybe provide some type of linking directly to that page, I will sit down with Ms. Wells and Sean, and we'll make that happen over the next day or two. I'm seeing lots of nods, so it will happen.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Anderson?
Do you want me to move to adjourn, or did, we already have a motion?
We don't have a motion, you have to move to adjourn.
Okay.
We need a motion.
Move to adjourn.
And a second?
Thank you.
All in favor? Do we have to?
Aye.